Good evening, I'm going to call tonight's select board meeting to order. We start our select board meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so if you're able, would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You were too busy yapping.
I was.
Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 24 AP warrant number 14, the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
I will move that we pay fiscal year 24 AP warrant number 14 in the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
I second.
Then moving second to pay fiscal year 24 AP warrant number 14, the amount of fifteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is payroll journal number 205 in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents.
I will move that we pay payroll journal number 205 in the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty cents.
I second.
And moving second to pay payroll journal number 205, the amount of twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, minutes of November 25th meeting.
I will move that we approve the minutes of the November 25th, 2024 regular meeting as presented.
I second.
Then moving seconded to, to accept the minutes of select board meeting, November 25th, 2024 as written. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Who carries? Next item on the agenda is public comment. It's a time for, of non-agenda items, time opportunity for a resident of Pownell to step forward and be heard by the select board. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be stepped forward and be heard at this time? Would you please come to the mic, state your name and address?
Heidi Richards, Minnet Road. I was just, wanted to see if you received my two letters today.
We will note them during our correspondents section of our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other resident of the town of Pownell who'd like to step forward and be heard at this time? Seeing none, uh, the next item is department head reports. Department head reports can be viewed on their respective website pages. You click on the department, their report is there. Is there any questions for department heads that are here from the select board?
I have none.
I, is the select board having anything to report at this time?
Nothing new.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is new business. First item, presentation by Port City Architecture of the Pownell Future Facilities Commission. So, at this time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're up.
Yes, Dave. We have the TV screen that you could.
Thank you, Maesia.
The mouse is disconnected.
Double tap.
We're all set.
Okay.
First up, on behalf of the Future Facilities.
Patrick, if you speak into the mic.
Oh, I have to actually be official?
Yes.
On behalf of the Future Facilities Committee, uh, thank you for allowing us to make this, uh, or having us make this presentation. Uh, I won't go through the lengthy two and a half year process, but I think all of you are well familiar with, with, uh, the selection of the committee, how the committee came up with the charge and mandate and deliverables, and how, uh, we went through the RFP process to select Port City Architecture, and then we've worked for the last two years. I also want to thank the select board itself for your participation. At a substantial meeting back in April, Andy O'Brien was instrumental in all of our work on the committee as an ex-FISIO member. And, uh, John made quite a few of the meetings, so thank you all. That's very supportive for a committee like ours. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Port City Architecture for their presentation of their portion of the report.
Speaking of the mic.
Yeah, and you could just sort of.
If, if you want to sit, you can use that mic.
Okay, I need somebody to advance the slide. Oh, okay, gotcha.
Oh, don't change your name.
Familiar face.
Show presentation.
Yeah.
Uh, there should be a slideshow at the top of the thing somewhere. Okay.
Yeah. Tap, missing. Yeah. There you go.
Oh.
Flash show? Flash show for the bottom.
Always exciting. So, uh, okay, great, okay. Well, uh, oh, I gotta sit in order.
Got to speak into a mic.
Got to speak into a mic, okay. Hi, uh, thank you, everybody. My name is Andy Highland. I'm principal with Port City Architecture. And, uh, with me is Curtis Robinson, also with our firm. We were both work, working on the, uh, on this study, uh, for the committee, uh, for, for, uh, it took a little, we had a little extra time that we had to, uh, take a look at the land and just make sure wetlands, everything were good. Uh, go ahead, next. Uh, also with us was a ex-Pownell resident, uh, Tom Saucier with Site Design Associates. So, uh, Tom, uh, was our civil engineer, kind of helped us, uh, with the, with the piece of land that the town owns. Uh, I think we got, did we get too many? There's one back there. So, we did a couple of things in the, in the process of the study. One was, uh, one, and this is our team. Again, one more. Your, your computer looks as good as mine. Mine's making a bunch of clicking.
There we go.
Okay. Uh, I took a look at the existing facilities that were there. Whoops, keep jumping out of there. First was, uh, the, the fire department. Uh, there's two small, I'd call them fire barns, fire facilities. They're really not. Uh, they were kind of built back when you just needed to store the apparatus. Mainly just a big garage. Nowadays, you have all sorts of training, even for a volunteer fire department and, uh, and there's, uh, they don't meet any codes. They're really not that safe a place to work in if you were going to be there for an extended facility or extended time. Uh, so the lots are too small. They're both on little postage stamp lots. We can't really, uh, can't really expand them, can't do much to the building. Even if we tore the building down and rebuilt on the site, it's just not big enough, uh, to, to work in. And, uh, we also want to just get the town ready, uh, you know, as much as you can keep going with the volunteer fire department, uh, that's great. Uh, but nationally, the trend is that, uh, you know, that we're really kind of moving toward paid staff, uh, every town, uh, on it. And it's just, there's so much training now to be a volunteer fire, uh, firefighter. It's just a real, it's a act of love and, uh, commitment. And a lot of people don't, you know, like it used to be, they don't live in the town that they work in. They might be living in Pownell, even if they wanted to join, they might be working in Portland and, and be like us getting here tonight and the traffic accident on the highway. So, anyway, uh, so there, there's also just not enough space in the building. Go next, the other, next page. Okay, Public Works. Uh, we took a look at, our charge was to look at both facilities, the, the fire department and Public Works. Uh, see if we could, uh, put the project together, uh, and see what that might look like. Uh, Public Works is in the same, uh, kind of predicament that the fire department's in. Uh, there's really, as demonstrated tonight, also, uh, you know, the Public Works trucks, the plow trucks are coming in and out of the kind of busy parking lot of the town hall. That's not really the safest way to do it. Uh, building, that building has given you every, all it can give in its lifespan. Uh, it also needs a lot of code upgrades, and it's just not big enough. I think some of the big things too is, uh, you know, you buy plow trucks, they're expensive pieces of equipment, and, uh, there's no place to store them. They're just kept outside. So, it really kind of shortens the life of your investment, uh, if there's no, uh, covered area to kind of keep the trucks, uh, out of the elements. Same, uh, a lot of, most towns, or not most towns, I guess, uh, but towns are moving toward having a wash bay, try to get that salt off. It, it not only, uh, lengthens the life of the, the apparatus and the plow truck, but it also prevents, uh, salt contamination, uh, from moving to, uh, other areas. So, those were some of the deficiencies there. Okay, try it again, next. So, our first task when we do something like this is just to take a, a clean look at like, how much space do you really need? Uh, you know, we're not really working off of what you had. We're, we're working off of what a modern, uh, fire department, uh, the rooms that they would have, and working off of what a Public Works department. Our firm's done, I don't know, forty, fifty projects, and we just specialize in municipalities, so we got a lot of experience with both. Kind of help compare Pownell to other towns your size, just making sure that you don't have too much or too little. So, uh, we try to go out, uh, you know, for at least thirty years, this building, you know, realistically, we're probably talking more like, you know, fifty to seventy years for most municipalities. And, uh, it's hard to prognosticate the, you know, what other growth and, but we do the, do the best we can. And, and, you know, oftentimes, in most towns, uh, a, a building, building a new facility is, is few and far between. It'll, it'll take a long time. So, we're looking to do this, uh, and do it right and do it for the long term. Okay? Uh, that's all right, you can just stay on that one. So, we looked at, uh, so in that programming, this is just space programming. We sit down, interview the fire chief and interview your public works director. Uh, talk to him about, you know, what the modern needs are. And, uh, the first one that was the, uh, uh, fire department, uh, put in the, you know, all the necessary spaces and rooms, and I think it was about seven thousand and change, is it? Then we did the same thing, and this is, that includes garage space for apparatus and offices, bunk rooms, uh, et cetera, for maybe future, uh, excuse me, paid staff, and seventy-six hundred was, uh, Public Works. So, about fourteen, fifteen thousand, uh, total, and, uh, and for the two. Okay? Button's slow. Then it jumps to, and then it waits. So, just a, just a graphic, so this is kind of what you have now in those bottom corners, and then the space needed. So, uh, both facilities are pretty deficient, uh, for space. So, we took a look at it, I mean, and, and what you, and, uh, and, you know, with the options that we had. So, we, uh, on the study, took a look at combining both the fire department, the Public Works. I mean, it gives you, uh, the savings of at least, it's more money to start, but it gives you a savings of, uh, being able to, uh, you know, mobilize once, have a contractor out if we're building one building. Uh, there are some savings, uh, uh, you know, doing both projects at once. Uh, we didn't put everything in there, as you'll see as we go through. So, we just really kind of kept it for offices and storage for Public Works. And, uh, we're going to maintain just some of the same area here, just try to reroute the traffic so it wasn't conflicting with the parking lot for, uh, for the town hall. Okay? So, we looked at, uh, a, a couple of sites. Uh, we really tried to stay with town-owned land, just for the cost, and, uh, that you don't have to also purchase the land. Uh, the only two, and I think the committee had looked, uh, also previously, but we took a look at it again. Uh, they asked us to, you know, just give our view on it. Uh, one is out, uh, behind the Elmwood Cemetery. Uh, it's town-owned land. It, it was, uh, it's a good, you know, a nice flat site and, uh, probably, you know, prior, you know, maybe farmland. Uh, the, uh, it's a, it's good size. The problem is, it's a very far off the road, uh, back. It's about eight hundred, uh, feet, I think, uh, just to get to the, the fire department. And, uh, and it also, uh, comes out on the road right across from the elementary school. So, that could be an issue, you know, if, if there's a call at, you know, at eight o'clock in the morning or three o'clock in the afternoon, and fire apparatus are trying to get out to a, an incident, uh, while schools just, you know, coming into session or get, or getting out. So, the cost, uh, Curtis helped me with the, the road cost again, just alone was seven. Yeah, there, there, the cost of running all the utilities and the road itself back there. Say seven fifty, you said?
No.
How much?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, I, okay. It, it was a, a, a pretty substantial cost, just, just with the road. Uh, I think, well, we can take a look more, but I think, you know, between the cost of the, of building and, uh, the, uh, location of the, of the, uh, uh, elementary school, we didn't, didn't rate this one, uh, that high. Okay? The second piece is located, uh, just, uh, beyond, there's like, kind of a gully. It's just kind of adjacent to the town hall land, and, uh, the, it was donated to the town ways back, just for the purpose of building maybe a new fire station over there. Uh, it's, it's, uh, pretty good, although it's very wooded back here, and there seems to be a fair amount of, you know, wetlands and water. Uh, we found a spot that I think could work there. So, um, uh, there, there would be some wetlands impacts, but I think it was, uh, it's, it's doable, uh, you know, with, uh, just paying a fee, I think, to DEP. So, it's not a major, uh, it's just a, a tier one or tier two, uh, uh, impact. So, that's the, uh, so we kind of laid it out on the site. Those are drive-through bays, uh, that you see. So, the fire department's on the left. It's split roughly down the middle. Uh, and the fire department's offices, bunk rooms on the far left. And we left room for some sort of future expansion, potentially, uh, to more offices, bunk rooms, uh, as, as you can see. And, uh, and then there was also room for expansion of, uh, Public Works in the back. So, we thought this was a, a good site. Okay? This is the, just looking at the floor plan. Uh, so there's, uh, day rooms and, and, uh, training, uh, areas, administrative offices, and, uh, and a few, uh, bunk rooms, if you have some staff on duty at night at some point. All right? We also, so that was the one on the left there. We also took a look at, uh, you know, maintaining, uh, the, uh, the salt storage building where it is on this site and not to relocate it. And the reason that we did that was, um, there is some, there was some contamination, uh, on this site. Uh, we, we would look to, uh, and what happens is when you're mixing the salt, uh, that, that it gets some contamination. Uh, we would look to add more covered area, so you'd mix it undercover, decrease that kind of contamination, and add the, uh, add the, uh, uh, wash bay on this end. And then we'd look at coming around on the back side, I think it's that side, the back side of town hall, and maybe increasing, uh, the parking. So, you can see the existing building that we took there is, uh, it would be eventually taken down. So, that was kind of a part B of it. Part A is the new facility. Part B would be trying to, uh, uh, you know, uh, clean this site up a little bit more and make it more efficient and more, and, and clean up some of the environmental, uh, issues. I, it's not doing, there's, right now, it's not really contaminating groundwater anymore. A lot of that stuff's been mitigated, but, uh, but we'd want to take, take that to kind of the next step. So, this is, uh, where it gets, uh, the rubber meets the road costs. Uh, so, the, they're up to, uh, about five fifty a square foot. We just work in total project costs. That's all your fees, permitting, hard construction, furniture, everything that you would need, uh, to, uh, to move into a facility. Uh, we're able to, uh, working with the committee, we were able, you know, talking to, talk to, talk to them about, instead of, uh, you know, traditional stick frame construction, we could go with a pre-engineered building. Uh, that brings it down pretty substantially at about three eighty, although it's still, I think, construction prices, they kind of went crazy, uh, during COVID. So, uh, that's, I think, uh, the going fee right now. We just had that vetted again with the, uh, pre-engineered contractor. We work with a lot, Patco Construction, and they were, uh, pretty happy with that number. And again, that's all the site work with it, furnishings, our fees, if we went forward with it for doing the final construction documents, et cetera. So, uh, that at fifteen thousand at three eighty, so that phase one, I'm calling it over there, is just under six million at three eighty. Uh, phase two, if we added the small addition, uh, to the salt stead, uh, salt storage shed and the wash bay, is about another million for a total of seven. Okay? That's kind of what it might look like, uh, uh, just a, our rendering of it. I think there's another one here. This would be facing the road, uh, and, uh, and the bays on both sides. So, they're drive-through bays for both, um, for both fire and, uh, Public Works. And, uh, and the reason, it's not necessarily for driving through, the reason we do drive-through bays is you can get two pieces of apparatus end to end in them, and, uh, you can store more, and it doesn't make this really long, so, super-long building, or you're not stacking apparatus, uh, behind each other, having to move one truck to get another out. I think there's another rendering or so in there. Uh, this is looking at the, the rear of it, might be another here. This is looking at that side, again, at the main entrance, that little bump out, I think, is more kind of living area. Okay? So, what would, uh, next, whoops, go back one, next steps. So, we think that this is, in our professional opinion, the best, uh, solution for the town. Uh, I think the next steps would be figuring out, uh, how to, how to pay for the project, uh, whether it's some municipal bonds, uh, federal grants. There are still, so, uh, there, there are today still, uh, monies out for, uh, fire stations and police stations. Senator Collins' office is administering that, and Senator King, uh, so they're part of the infrastructure, the old infrastructure plan. I'm not sure, you know, where that's going to go in the next year. But, right now, as of today, there's still money there in the tune of, you know, a million to two million, maybe. Uh, that, uh, that would be, you know, just grant money, uh, to the town. So, that's been, uh, we've got a number of projects, I think about five or six of them right now that are working, you know, with that grant money as well to help them. Whole thing, uh, from start, like, if, uh, start of our construction documents to the end of constructions, about eighteen months, probably six months of permitting and, and drawing, finishing the drawings and another, uh, year of construction. So, whenever you get going to start, it'd be about eighteen months. Yeah, and permit, yeah, including, uh, permitting, exactly. So, once you kind of got the financing piece of it figured out, uh, then, you know, you could, and that, then that, and pulled the trigger, then that's where it would go. Okay? Honey, I'm, and we're, we're happy to pick up any other questions and, uh, so. But, we think, uh, thank you for selecting us and, uh, hope everybody's, uh, happy with the, I know nobody's happy with the dollar value, but that, but we can't, we can't help that, sorry. But, uh, I think it's a good solution and makes sense for the town. Thanks.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the public on that particular presentation? So, I think the next step forward will be, the select board will be sending out an invitation for the next committee to move this project forward. Um, I'm not quite sure. Go ahead, Andy.
My plan is to get through the holidays and then we'll begin in early January, get a, the first initial meeting together and of the new committee and go from there.
So, we'll, does the new committee have a charge yet?
It does.
So, with that charge, we'll move forward and, um, your recommendations and. Certainly, the town is wrestling with the funding and, and, but we're not going to neglect moving forward as we go through the labyrinth of trying to, to find our, our way. Bo? Please, would you please?
Bo Chesney, Lawrence Road. I was on the committee, um, and it was a very good committee. Uh, I'd like to commend, um, uh, our, uh, facilitator chair, uh, Patrick Christian, um, did a phenomenal job of keeping the cats herded. Um, would just like to point out that, um, from a timing standpoint, there's some criticality in terms of going for funding, uh, the, uh, federal grant process. Uh, the window tends to open, uh, suddenly and then close suddenly, uh, cyclical. Um, we're coming up on that window timeframe, um, although it gets pushed around and pushed off. Um, we're coming up on that window timeframe, um, although it gets pushed around and pushed off, uh, more often than not. Um, in addition, uh, there are towns that have received, um, you know, a substantial portion, uh, in federal funding for a, a project like this. A dual-purpose built structure like this is, is, um, uh, very attractive. Um, and, um, there was another really important point I was gonna make. Um, and, uh, that is, um, uh, I think that, that, uh, the sooner we can get going on it, obviously, the better. But, um, you know, with, with the current political situation in Washington and our senior senator moving into head of appropriations committee, in all likelihood, uh, it, it is a great time to be doing this from that potential funding standpoint.
Thank you, Bo.
Well, the, the, the federal funding schedule, uh, the, the grant process itself can take, you know, eighteen to twenty-four months just in the, you know, application approval, you know, to the point of funding. Um, and typically, the window opens up in, you know, in January, you know, January to March sometime to get the application in. Um, and then that starts that clock. Doesn't mean that we can't be doing things in addition to that, you know, during that timeline. But it, it, it can move quickly, but federal money.
Yes, Patrick.
One of the committee's recommendations, because this is
This is Patrick Christian.
Oh, sorry, Patrick Christian, uh, one-on-one, Leighton Road. One of the committee's strongest recommendations is to either have in-house expertise or hire expertise to follow the grant process. I don't think the town can afford to build this or do this project without a substantial amount of federal funding. And getting that part of the process started immediately is, is critical. Uh, we believe that we've given the town sufficient materials so that with somebody going through and going through with the grant process, they can bring these to the federal officials who will then say, oh yes, we can get behind this project. You gotta remember, Senator Collins has, her office has one part of the process. Senator King has his part of the process and Representative Pingree. And all three of these are slightly different. So you need someone who is well-versed and can make all those communications and make sure materials are in the right hands. We found that the staff of all three of these representative, of the senators and representatives have been really great to work with, but they really need somebody that they know they can call the last minute, oh, we need this, we need that. So, our, our last recommendation was either have someone in-house if we can, somebody's available to do that or to hire that. I think there's funding, the town, uh, approved in the last town meeting that, um, could be used, uh, in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. So there's certainly gonna be, um, a number of workshops to bring the town together to talk about this, 'cause it has to be a town project. We're gonna have to talk about funding, it's sort of a substantial hit to the, to the taxpayer. Um, so, we will proceed as quickly as we can. I think there have been a couple of offers from town residents to, to work in the grant writing process. Um, so we will definitely start undertaking it. The first meeting will appear to be in January. So, thank you very much. So, you know, the select board, I think, has thanked our numbers time, the committee and all the work that they did, so. Any other thoughts?
Thank you for coming out in the, in this weather. Truly appreciate all the work you've done and you've given us a really good start.
Yeah, Andy, yeah, I think you guys need, I mean, we're, you know, we're behind you. We love to see the project, have the questions, so, for Abby, for, for what we already charge the town for their presentations.
Perfect.
So we'd love to, to see the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, so we had it on, uh, yeah, so you, we just gave you that jump ride, I think, right? So. Let us know if you're, um, okay? Okay?
We'll, we'll get, the intent is that we will get that posted.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Okay, um, safe travels home, gentlemen.
Yeah, drive carefully.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the property discussion. Any idea what that means?
No.
Great, then I'll table that. Um, so is there any other new business? Seeing none, is there any old business?
I have nothing.
Okay. Seeing none, uh, correspondence, we've had some, go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, we have had some correspondence about the, uh, short-term rental ordinance or policy. And I guess now is a good time to say, we do need to go back to the drawing board. That was just an initial.
Can you list the, the, the people who wrote?
Yeah, uh, Gabe.
Gabe, yeah?
Yep, he, he wrote a letter in, a couple of letters in. Uh, Heidi has written in some letters, Heidi Richards. And I believe we received one from Chris Bourgeois.
So there, now?
Yeah.
Hey, any correspondence for you to record?
No.
Nor do I. So that's it for correspondence, is there any other business? Seeing none?
I will move that we adjourn.
Moving second in. All in favor? Thank you for coming. Meeting adjourned.
Drive carefully.
Yes, drive safely. Yeah, just make sure Steve gets it for the, okay? Bo, how are you?
I was gonna see if I could steal that margin.
Now, Bo, I hope I didn't scare you with the big fire out there.